All right, we'll go ahead and get started. Today's August 2nd, 2022. We're at our 7:30 PM regular city council meeting. I'll go ahead and do a roll call vote. Myself, Dana Dominguez is here stepping in for Mayor Katie McCalla. Okay? Kara?
Yes.
And Omar?
Here.
All here and present. Before we go on to number two, I wanted to ask the council if we could go ahead and amend the agenda. We had a request come in through public correspondence asking for an event path for the, from the west of the area, ARCA, for Music in the Park. So I'd like to add that in the, during public comments during the, well, can we have to vote on it though?
Yep, but you can still vote on it.
Okay. All right, so. Okay. All right, so the agenda is approved. Are all those in favor?
Aye.
Great. All right, number three, we're gonna go ahead and approve the consent agenda. Make it a motion.
Make a motion, certainly.
Okay. Any discussion?
Madam Protem.
Yep. Call me Dana.
Um, I just wanted to add, Councilmember McFerran had sent me an email and there was some typos in the 7:22 and 7:25 minutes. I highlighted the section where I made some amendments. We, one being the comment on 7:22 of being postponed for a future meeting. And then the other section was on the 23rd. And just a, just a brief statement about a concern about a social media post. So we just.
So you'll update those?
Those have already been amended and they haven't been published yet. So the amended would be published with tonight's meeting.
Okay.
And then you also have the May 2022 Treasury Report. I don't have anything to add to the report. Do you have any questions? I know you didn't get it till this evening, but please don't hesitate once you know the time to review a little bit more, to reach out to me and I can go through them.
That's the one in the back, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or it's with your paperwork that's on your desk, to the back.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any other discussion or comments? All those are favored, approved consent agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, that passes. Four, I have to remember to, myself.
Yeah.
Four zero.
Nope, you're on it. I was just gonna remind you.
All right, and so do we need to go through all of the items in the consent agenda individually? Nope, that's what I thought. Sorry, it's been a while since I've had to do this. All right, so we will go on to number four, vendor voucher claims.
Motion to approve vendor voucher claims.
I actually had a question before, what hydrogen was replaced? What hydrogen was replaced? I had a hard time with it.
There's higher parts to fix, I'm not sure. And Danny's out this week, but I will, I can check with Matt in the morning. He knows and I can let you know.
It was line item six, right, construction. Oh. Yeah, it says great construction.
I'll find out, let you know.
Any other question or question? Okay, all approved. I'm opposed. That's us four zero. Number five, go on to public comments or correspondence. This is the time set aside for comments from public, from the public on topic of city business, other than those listed on the agenda. No action may be taken. Please state your name and address for the record and keep your comments no more than two minutes. We do not have a microphone.
You can just step forward.
But you can step forward to, to be closer to the recording and hopefully if folks need to go back and watch the recording to hear better, then they'll be able to hear it through the recording.
Okay, buenas tardes. Gracias. Estamos aquí, no, somos invitados, pero estamos aquí. Que la gente, uh. Thank you, we're here, we're invited, we are here.
Porque ahora ni los díneros, el mensaje no te están para ponernos la agenda. Queremos saber qué es lo que realmente pasa.
Because now, you know, that's it, they're not getting with time, it's you know, we're here to know what's happening.
Y solamente quiero pedirles mi corazón que estén honestos, lo tomen serio porque somos importantes.
I would like to ask you from my heart, they should take us into account if you're honest and you're, we're here, we're serious about this.
Somos importantes.
We're important.
Y queremos que así se nos tomen, como gente importante que somos para el pueblo, gente que aporta, gente que trabaja duro, gente que está informe con todo lo que está pasando.
We would like you to consider ourselves as people, people that work for community, people that carry the school.
Creo que habrá un jueguito menenguino, quiero tomar aquí un juego para con nosotros.
I heard there's a team, I don't want to fall down here without, but I wanna keep it like that.
Y no queremos ser juego.
So we don't wanna be anyone's kid.
Queremos que tean honestos, si te puede, se puede, y si no, simplemente sean honestos.
We want to know if it's gonna happen, if that, yeah.
Y yo, yo, okay. To, este es otro tópico que es bien importante, por eso mira toda esta gente aquí.
Speaking of another topic that's really important too.
Toman de esto.
And three months of debt.
Los bilis. Cuatrocientos cincuenta, cuatro dólares mensuales.
Four hundred sixty-four dollars every month.
¿Qué es esto para ustedes?
What is that for you? What does that mean for you?
Yo voy a reclamar ni vil, pensé que eran dos bilis en uno.
I want to complain, I thought it was two dollars in one.
¿Y qué es la respuesta de ellos? Lo mismo, lo mismo de cada vez que salen cada uno.
What was the answer? The same, the same, every time the bell rings.
No hay para dónde ir, no hay respuestas.
No way to go and no answers.
Y esto es injusto.
And this is unfair.
Ni siquiera una semana de trabajo, para mí.
Getting paid in, for me, I don't even need this in one week.
Por eso todos ellos están involucrados, están aquí unidos. Si deben pasar sus bilis, tenga los bilis o, toda la comunidad. Es injusto, es injusto. Si no están pensando lo que vamos a hacer, porque no se está viviendo lo que te gasta, no, no. No está, ¿qué es? Pero nada, nadie se le encuentra, porque yo fui, ¿y qué fue tu respuesta?
The one, what was their answer?
¿Qué fue de ustedes la idea de tu vida estos bilis? Esto es lo que me han dicho la ciudad.
They called me, but it was your idea and we, that's what they called me.
Porque los generadores gastaron más luz y nosotros tenemos que pagamos.
Oh, the generators are, you know, take up a lot of weight and we have to.
Que dijeron la ciudad aumentar los bilis.
The city just had it, uh, a little.
Me dijo, okay, pero doscientos dólares diferencia.
By two hundred dollars, exactly.
O sea, ¿qué es eso? La comida está recada, no hay trabajo, está bien lento los trabajos, o sea, ¿por eso?
That's good, if expensive work is very small right now.
Gente con familia, niños pequeños, o sea, tenemos que pagar un bil y pagar comida para los niños.
Okay, we have to make decisions, we gotta pay our bills or buy the food for kids.
O sea, piensen en nosotros, think about us.
I, I, I wanna give other people time too. I hear you. I also got a utility bill. And it, as far, and I don't understand everything perfectly, but I remember when we do, did do the increase, it was literally a very small, tiny increase.
For us, it didn't show.
Only increases that, probably see on this bill would be increasing trash service. And then there was implementation stormwater.
Wouldn't that only be like eight dollars or something?
Or a stormwater fee for residents, four dollars.
Four dollars.
The trash was a, fifty, by the.
Yeah, it was really small.
The trash itself, like five for the van, it was almost five dollars. But it's, yeah, but it's the electric portion. Electric is what is high right now and it's high across the board. It's, we've seen an increase about four hundred plus kilowatts on everybody's and that's the usage. But on top of that, there is also, it's the fuel charge which people were asking about. And that is higher than it was last month. So it goes based on an average of three months and then it continues down macro. So once the three months is up, then it calculates the three months and it compares them.
Okay, so, excuse me, but when you go and ask that, they don't know what to say. The judge, you use more water, you use more like, no. And I confront them and look, I try to put every, turn up everything, every single day. It doesn't matter to you guys, it doesn't matter to the people. It's always higher. So that's my concern.
It's concern for everybody. The electrical usage is probably the highest on my bill. And the most expensive on my bill because the electricity that we're, that I'm using, I'll use myself for an example, is because I run an air conditioner. So my, my bill is probably a hundred fifty, two hundred dollars more than it was last month. Because the electricity per, we bill it for kilowatt, is that correct? Uh, it fluctuates because of the usage. And so if that makes sense, I don't know if you need to. No, it doesn't affect anyone. You know, because I'm not gonna start hurting, I'm here for them. Okay. To be honest, they don't get any of this money to do. We don't want to hear about it, we want to hear from them, it's public comment. I, I'm not saying it that way. I'm trying to use myself as an example. I know it's not your intention, but now is the time to listen to public comment and the people.
When, uh, when you go to the city, they should be offering you payment plans as well. If you can't afford it, is that right? You should be able to break those out.
Those make no sense, you still have to pay that in a month.
Right.
Come on.
So I, I talked to Lee a little bit yesterday about some communication and we'll try to get, maybe see if we can get that translated to what we talked about of explaining the bill, posting a bill, being more transparent and why it's more and, and things like that.
The thing is, is in the summer months, it's, and again, it's not uncommon. If you were to probably look out at other individuals, so you have different utility companies. And I'm sure if you were to have a conversation with others, with a client or other, it's not uncommon this time of the year. And sometimes what's confusing with, because of how our billing runs. Because we, we run, so your, your bill is based on your previous month's usage. And so sometimes we think of the here and now, we don't always understand that it's, it is stated on your bill, it'll say billing months or billing dates from here to here. And so even though with the here and now, we may be a little more cautious about what we're using, maybe the previous month you, it wasn't on the radar yet. Even for the city, so the city, we'll talk about electric. The city purchased electricity as a wholesale product. So the city as well, when that electric usage being used, we are purchasing that power to give to the community members. So for example, on average, we may only see a two hundred and fifty some thousand dollar bill for the total consumption of power. Just the last two months, our bill has been a half a million dollars. And so because that's the consumption of everybody using the, the electric power, um, the electric rate hasn't changed, it's just based on, what's gonna happen is, right now you have a power charge because of the expenses. And then once it comes into the cooler months or towards the fall, and most folks don't notice it, as we all do, because we're all noticing, because we're, it's coming more out of our, our cost of living. When the fall comes along, you're going to see, most likely in the power charge, there becomes a credit. So it reduces your power. And what it is, is, is to, it, it's to balance it out over a, the year's use. So what you may be spending extra now because of the charge, then it will balance itself out over when the usage drops. So it, it is, and again, it's a, it's a complex. And so trying to bring it to, you know, how to make it more understandable. And that's the only thing, when I talked to Mayor Protem, is that we could work to try to do education. This happened in 2020. We had a lot of complaints and individuals upset because in 2020, we ran through the same situation where we had a number of days where we were at a hundred degrees and it was extremely hot. And, and so even if you don't utilize air conditioning, your utilities in your house are working harder because your refrigerator is trying to keep things cooler. You're running fans or, you know, you may be doing more laundry because you're, I, I don't know each individual's household, those are just some examples. But again, this happened in 2020, so it's, it's happening again. And it's, again, weather-related usage.
But I've got some technical to give you. One year, we went to the home for three weeks. I disconnected every single day, nobody in the house, nobody, for three weeks, okay? I was infected, today, I'll go. But what am I surprised? It was higher. I mean, that's what I'm talking about.
And again, we'd have to say, and that's where, in your three weeks, it, it would all depend upon the three weeks of the timing of when the bill is created. So that, that's.
I definitely know that, yeah, I know what, which cycle starts and what it ends. That's definitely, I know what, what's going on in that. Second, but I didn't never have any extra or say from nothing at all, since I've been twenty-two years old.
The only thing I could recommend to you, because we're during a, a public comments and, and limited on time, the only thing I can recommend is, you know, is individuals, we can set up appointments and sit down and we can pull history, we can look at history and do what we can do to better help you understand. And again, if it is a situation where we need to establish a payment plan, then the city can do that. If it's an error, then again, that's on the city to go through those steps with individuals to see if we can, and do that. But at the frontline, it's just, I know, again, for most people, it's, you know, it's a lot. We're all the same, we're all getting the same bills.
So if people are calling the city, Lee, can they just request a, an appointment?
I, I would recommend that right now. I mean, I, I just, I mean, we have public here and, and that's what they're asking. And we'll do our best, I mean, to get people in as timely as we possibly can. And I'll just make, the city manager and I'll just make time in our schedules. And if, if we need to have someone there that we can be bilingual with, then we will, we will schedule and we'll make time for that. That's all I can, I can say right now. I don't know if there's, you know, something that council would want more from us. If we wanted to, you know, set a, just a public discussion, so there could be more, you know, more people to cover versus individual appointments. I just think that if you would allow us that opportunity to have that discussion. But again, if you, you know, look back through newspapers, media, you'll see the, the very same thing happened in 2020 during the same timeframe. I appreciate your permission, I appreciate that, but we wouldn't believe that. That's what I'd say.
Okay, uh, buenas tardes, yo estoy aquí nuevamente.
Good afternoon, I'm here.
Esperando que me digan lo que ha pasado durante dos meses de espera, su respuesta. Hicieron la votación, pero yo no sé para qué lo hicieron.
Waiting after two months, I know you took the vote, but nothing.
Si la votación hicieron para decirnos que no, si la votación hicieron para decirnos sí.
You didn't vote to say yes or no.
Nos pidieron tiempo para redactar una, una carta. Yo creo que es demasiado tiempo para redactar una carta.
You wanted to share a time to do the letter and I think it's, it's been enough time.
Esa ayuda, de verdad, la gente lo necesita. Hay gente que, hay gente que gana ochocientos dólares insenales.
People who make eight hundred dollars a month.
And right now? Los bilis de quinientos dólares.
And the bell, five hundred dollars?
Necesitamos la ayuda.
We need the help.
De verdad, la necesitamos.
The truth is, we need it.
Necesitamos su ayuda.
We need your help.
Como ustedes nos lo dijeron.
Just like you told us.
Como ustedes dijeron que estaban de acuerdo todos.
You told us you were in agreement, all of you.
Esta gente que está aquí, se siente decepcionada.
These folks that are here feel deceived.
Saben cómo los han, cómo los han visto, porque yo soy el que siempre abro con ustedes. Los han visto que son unos mentirosos.
Now, I don't see you, because I've been here a lot.
¿Por qué? ¿Por qué? Porque no les dan respuesta, me dicen a mí, ¿qué pasó?
Why? No answer. What's going on?
Les digo, ahora ni siquiera nos quieren ver, hazte presentarlos.
Now you don't even wanna see us, we have to.
Ahora yo necesito una respuesta, yo estoy por ellos aquí, por esos dos puntos. La ayuda que les hemos pedido y ahora los bilis que nos han llegado.
I'm here because I wanted the answer. It's to me, the help that you found and the bills that are coming.
No sé qué respuesta me tengan a lo que yo estoy diciendo.
I don't know what you're gonna respond to what I'm saying.
What? Um, so what I would say, and I'm not the, the chair of the finance committee, but I did read the email that David had submitted just recently. There were a couple of things in there that I wanted our attorneys to look at again. I don't know, Kara, if you were able to read that or not, but, um, that's all I can say now, because we were basically told to wait because of legal things. So if I could give you all this money tomorrow, I would. But I'm one person, Kara's one person, and we, you know, we, we have to heed the advice of our attorneys.
La pregunta es, ¿siguen pie, sigue la respuesta así? Que nos van a ayudar o?
Are you gonna help us? Are you still gonna help us? You all voted in real time.
I know my position, but the cap's to the, this petition.
Si quieres en la paz, no?
Claro. Esta, esta petición, yo la apoyé desde un principio y apoyé el pago de mil seiscientos dólares. Ahora, esta decisión debe tomarse por todo el consilio de mi parte, siempre estado a favor, pero necesitamos una decisión colectiva.
¿Con cuánto tiempo más? ¿Otro año?
How much longer, yeah?
No. Well, we, even when we spoke about ARCA funds, we were supposed to like set some other key things and we just, we had other things come up that we had to get done, or else we won't be able to do anything, just because we had to put another person in a position. And so it really, I, I don't wanna make up excuses, but it really put us in a bind to, to move forward on many things. And even today, we're, we're voting on things that should have been passed a month or two ago because of absences and sicknesses and, yeah, sure.
Yeah, regarding, con respecto a los, al, el costo de, de los bilis, este mes a mí me salió aproximadamente el cincuenta por ciento más. Es menos que la mayoría de ustedes, porque yo vivo solo. Y eso tiene una explicación muy fácil, pero debemos estar conscientes, y bueno, translate, perdón.
No, no hablo en español.
Okay, debemos estar conscientes en que todos los servicios de la ciudad están aumentando el precio. Porque es la vida, los, los servicios de la ciudad no bajan el precio. Necesitamos mantener equipo, necesitamos mantener buenos sueldos, necesitamos mantener prestaciones para que la gente no se vaya.
Pero buenos sueldos para qué?
Para ganar el deberes.
Para los trabajadores de la ciudad. Wow, ese es otra situación que no tenemos nada que ver.
Y es con un bilis, quinientos diez dólares.
Ya, no está, lo entiendo perfectamente.
Pero, ¿por qué está saliendo más caro que en la ciudad?
Porque, porque, permíteme, porque en esta ciudad tenemos una, una estación que genera energía y con esta temporada de calor fue necesario producir más energía local y el costo se incrementó.
Me disculpa, sí, eso lo entendemos, pero doscientos, trescientos, dos, ¿no? No me expecto. Yo pagaba cien ochenta, doscientos treinta por lo mucho, tengo un bilis, quinientos diez dólares.
Okay, y'all, we gotta move on. I'm, I'm really, really sorry, I don't wanna do this, I would be here all night if I could. But we have a lot of things that we have to get, get through. Okay, you, we can have one more on the essential services issue and then we have to move on, I'm so sorry.
We have to talk way more than this.
The city staff, I don't know.
Yeah.
I understand that, I understand that.
No, no. Normalmente me viniera dos, veinte. Mi bilis era dos, veinte, five dollars, two pounds. Son quinientos diez dólares que no tengo para pagar, si yo lo pago, me lo recortan.
Five hundred and ten dollars.
Tengo cuatro niños en mi casa que no pueden estar con calor.
Is that okay then? They're gonna come up, I might, I have four kids that own the car, so how about?
Tengo que continuar.
How I did that?
Tienen que bañarse sin luz, con quinientos diez dólares que tengo que pagar, no, that's okay.
Five hundred and ten dollars.
De doscientos y veinte al quinientos diez.
And that's my worry, it's all for help. I don't need any action. Maybe a phone number, based on your list, I had a past due, or I had a, I have five kids, one is.
So you can, we can set up a payment plan.
The payment plan, I understand, but they said there was an extension, but it's only one and once a year. Why can't you guys change that or pay?
Because the rule is that right now, so we'd have to take an ordinance. So that'd be something that you, and you're discussing, that's something that the council, they can consider that to change.
That's my price for next month, is it gonna be five hundred dollars from the three hundred?
Yeah, I think as a council, we need to discuss this more, especially if it's gonna happen every summer. Um, maybe, and this would be a utility board discussion as well, but maybe there is some things that we can do for a summer relief or.
By your budget.
Yeah.
You know, it's your budget bill. They basically, but it's your past years, if you've got those high amounts, those low amounts, they just balance that out. You pay a flat amount through the whole year.
So, and, and we just started budget billing, right? Or no?
It's been.
I, I think, I think that.
Okay, 'cause I just heard about it, like, in the last couple of months, and I was like, whoa.
I know, it's the new process for probably twenty years of that one.
Really?
I mean, it matters, it does.
Well, I do, yeah, I do it through Minn America.
Se supone que ahorita en el verano el pueblo dice que tiene que bajar un poquito más el miedo y está carísimo, no tengo para pagarlo.
I don't have, I don't have, I don't have.
Well, voy a tener una extensión, me dieron dos semanas.
I went to get, that's an hour and a half.
Está, agarran.
But they don't understand, again, I mean.
No, they understand their fault, they, they, you don't understand, they need help.
Okay, 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 okay. I under, I have been there. In 2020, I got that bill that was twice as much, and I was a single mother. I understand, but I have been there.
It's a public comment, I'm trying for you guys to pass the motion. That's not how public comments work.
No, it's not.
And I think that Mayor Protem, you need to call the meeting to order and.
I, I'm, I am going to call it to order. I don't want you all to think we're being insensitive. When I say something like that, it's because I was a single mom, growing up with kids who also had to go through this in 2020. And we can do something, where there's more communication, if we can look at some other resources, we can post. We can, we can put it in Spanish and English, but right now, tonight, we cannot do anything.
You can listen, and that means a lot.
We, we did listen. And we have other business to do. I am sorry, I can't, I'm just sitting in temporarily, I'm, I'm. We, we did listen, and we have other business to do, I am sorry, I can't, I'm just sitting in temporarily, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to move the meeting forward. All right, I will ask everybody who does not have any further comments, other than bills or the central worker ARCA funds to, if, if anybody has comments other than that, to please come forward, otherwise, we're gonna move forward. And in the meantime, please, call the city and set up a payment plan, and this council will also look into... It, it allows you not to get your electricity turned off, is what it does. Yes, it does, but we, and, and I understand that, so we will look into what we can do, it's not just your group of folks, it is the entire city. So, we, we will, we will look into it, like, we can't all in town suffer like this, and I understand that. And we can't be left with, without air and, and electric and, and refrigerator and everything else, it's just not gonna happen, our council is not gonna allow that to happen. But I just don't know what else to say right now. To get your bill reviewed, to understand it more, I don't know, yes, just call and if, so what, what I hear is, I call the city and nobody listens to me, we get an attitude sometimes, things like that. So I would just call again and say, I want to make an appointment with the utility billing broker, whoever it would be, so somebody can explain this to me. That's what I would do. But council doesn't have to be there for all that, right? You guys can just set that up. And the options, different options. I think we've talked about that many times, of how small our city is, how much less money we have, how much less stuff we have, and how we can't afford some of the things that may put us at risk. But, like I said, I got David's email, Cara also got David's email. We're gonna go back through that list, our attorneys aren't here today, but they're gonna go back through and make sure that we have clear and transparent answers.
We were also notified by our auditor, the auditor wanted to review as well, because he studied on state meetings, and they just wanna make sure that
Well, the vote was a consensus to pursue that, it wasn't a resolution. So there is different ways also that the council can agree to pursue things. And if there was a, a legal resolution, from my understanding, then it would be a lot more complicated for us to backtrack it that, but that wasn't what the vote was back then. And if, if perhaps we can formulate a more clear email or something like that, I'll put it on my radar to make sure that it gets addressed, that it gets more explained in the next week or so.
Y he ha venido a hablar siempre por la gente. Hace dos meses, ¿por qué nadie responde? I mean, ¿por qué nadie responde? I just say you're frustrated. I'm not trying to start like, no promotion, but...
I don't know what else to tell you, I, I know that I've found myself in a rock and a hard place many times. And I know you're shaking your head, but you're not sitting right here, you don't know what goes on behind the scenes, Emily. No, I'm not, no, I, I empathize, I do. But we need to, we need to move on if there's no other... I understand that, we don't have an answer today, we don't.
All right, sit here and listen to this. Did the lawyer give you any idea how long it's gonna take him to find out these legal questions? I would put pressure on your lawyers. Obviously, I mean, you're paying your lawyers, just to say they're thinking about it, but you don't want it, you know?
You're right.
They have put pressure, they do correspond with the attorneys, but we also have other, we have our auditors, there are other due diligence that we've been asked to consider. And those things, those are discussions that also, and then there are, I'm sorry, but there are other things that do come up ahead of that, that have emergency priorities that have to be addressed. And they do impact the individuals that are standing in this room, those day-to-day items as well. So, again, with, with our small city government, we, we, with the time that we have, we do spend time emailing the attorneys. We spend time communicating, we're waiting for information to come back from our auditor. The thing is, is what I, I believe our council has tried to, if proceeding, you have to make sure, and you folks know this because you work with a larger city, we wanna make sure that we do things the right way in order to not have it impact negatively for the entire community as a whole. So therefore, sometimes it does take a little bit of time to make sure you get it right. But that's the goal, is if it is an opportunity that the council decides they wanna move forward with, that's the due diligence of making sure that we've done everything right, so we don't have a negative impact in the future. In the future. Yeah, it's not even just, I mean, not even with individuals here, I mean, there have been people across our nation, when you've had things given to you, to only find out, then it's gonna get taken back because certain things weren't done correctly. And again, we're not even through, you know, the, the bigger part of the ARCA funds and the discussions, we don't even have our second portion of the ARCA fund yet. So I mean, that, that's the thing, it, it does take time to make sure you have it right. Where you guys will get it, and we're just asking for a piece of that one that's... We have to make sure by giving a piece, that the city has done everything legally that we can do in order not to suffer the consequences of our livelihoods, of each of them.
All right, we need to move forward, are there any city council public comments or correspondence from city?
Only other thing, Mayor Portem, is if you wanted to go ahead with the event request, and then we can take any other correspondence.
Okay, Lee, will you discuss the event request?
So before you, we, and again, Councilmember McSharon may even be able to give the years of the event, but this is an opportunity that the West Liberty Area Arts Council has put together. Every August, we run, they run music in the park at the Long Haven Park. And again, it's the Arts Council. I don't know, it's been two thousand and five, I just, I just know it's, I think two thousand and eight, we and Rachel talked about it during music, two thousand eight, two thousand nine downtown, at the Long Haven Park, and it's super free and open to the public, it's a live different each Friday night. And just again, another opportunity that the Arts Council likes to bring different cultural arts to our community on the Friday nights. As Cara or Councilmember McSharon stated down, and the only thing that they're asking for is electricity, which we already have the power on, and then cones for blocking a couple of the parking spaces, so for safety reasons and unloading and loading, and then just to communicate with the police department to make them aware, you know, in the, the attendance downtown would be larger versus, you know, a normal, maybe a normal, you know, just to communicate over to the police department.
So nothing...
For traffic control.
Nothing, but more of them, what we have done from it.
All right, six thirty tonight, yeah, yeah.
So do I need a motion to approve? Yes, can I get a motion to approve? Jose, okay, Jose, motion, second, second, or any more discussion? All those in favor, opposed? Passes four zero. All right.
So Madam Mayor, if you want, I didn't know if your council had any other correspondence.
All right, so let's go ahead and move on, then, so old business. We have ordinance number zero one two zero two two zero seven one nine, the second reading with motion to waive the third and a final reading of the ordinance providing the division of tax, taxes levied onto the taxable property in the July twenty twenty-two. July twenty-two, addition to the West Liberty Urban Renewal Area, which is on the corner of Mexican and Columbus, correct, across from BP?
Motion.
And that, is that also to waive the third? Okay, so Cara motioned and Omar second. All right, so that passes, or all those in favor? Oh, roll call, okay. Mr. Zacharias?
Yes.
I vote yes.
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 Okay, passes four zero.
I, I have a question that has nothing to do with your approval, in the least proven. You can have both functions, maybe your time both, is my opinion, is a question today.
Well, I'm just stepping in, so I... Oh, I asked that the first time, I was like, am I supposed to vote? All right, so we went ahead and passed that, we move on to the number seven, new business. Right, so, letter A is the resolution two zero two two zero eight zero two dash zero six, a resolution authorizing the development agreement with SGA Construction Inc.
What this is, is, we, the agreement is actually out to SGA, but Trigun is authorizing the approval of it prior to his signature. It's a forgivable loan of two hundred thousand dollars that Tiff will actually pay back his loan to the state, basically, so...
And this is for the same property, right?
Same property.
Okay.
Is this a common practice?
Yeah. Well, the state of Iowa is a no interest loan that, that he received. What we're doing is, we are, we will be back, we'll actually use Tiff, because we'll probably, the timing of the state payments, the payments will have to be made in the state, or that's probably gonna be generating any tax, and so what this agreement does is, we'll capture Tiff to recoup any money that we paid going back, or just to give a loan, or is no interest loan to the state, we're considering it, if forgivable, by creating the, the commercial space and the five residence rooms.
Motion to go ahead and offer a development agreement with SGA Construction. Okay.
All right, is a roll call vote? Mr. Zacharias?
Yes.
Myself is yes.
Yes, Sarah and Mr. Martina.
Okay, passes four zero. All right, letter B is the resolution two zero two two zero eight zero two dash zero seven, a resolution approving a grant agreement between the Iowa Economic Development Authority and the City of West Liberty for the purpose of award twenty-two APR DH dash zero six zero in the amount of two hundred thousand. Is this related to what you just talked about?
Project, this is another one that Ken worked on from, from Wheelie, this is for the property located at three seventeen. Right kind of behind Jose building.
But that standalone type of older building, yeah.
What we do is, we'll create two, three metal apartments on the upstairs. Yes, and there'll be commercial space below, and this was a state grant, would help cover the development of those housing units, is really what it's for, there was some money. And when Ken and I attended a training at Strawberry Point, they were talking about the C program to put money towards housing in the ups, in the upstairs of your downtown district. Originally, they had hoped to get three hundred thousand, they got changed to two hundred thousand, but that will allow this project to move forward. And the reason we're bringing it to you tonight is, we had to get it back to the state within sixty days, and there will be another development agreement that will be with people doing that project, which is Brook Ventures LLC, so, and we're working on modifying that. It is a matching grant, yes.
Motion to approve grant between Iowa Economic Development Authority and City of West Liberty for the purpose of awarding the money, two hundred thousand.
And we'll do a roll call though. Myself is yes, yes, Karen and Mr. Martina.
Yeah.
All right, great, passes four zero. All right, letter C, looks like the city council discussion appropriate action to amend the West Liberty Electric Customer Service Rules.
Back in April, you made an amendment to the customer service rules, and a lot of this refers back to the device, ties into the disconnect that we're requiring for safety of our first responders as well as people that are going in, if perhaps through fire. And one of the items, it was looked at on staff, and it couldn't come under one of the items above, but we wanted to make it very clear, so that's why we're asking for the amendment tonight to add terminology about how to disconnect to properties and...
So, does all the properties currently have that, or just a newer?
All, all of your new construction is required. If you, as a homeowner, pass for your car to be disconnected, to have some work done, and you don't have a disconnect, then you're required to put that disconnect in. And in this case, where you had a home shut off for more than six months, the disconnect is going to be required as well, so...
And that costs like two hundred and fifty dollars or so, is that what Ed said?
I forget what.
I know, I don't know what he said. And it's just, you know, the reason there, you know, the reason cities are doing this is really for the safety of their first responders. In the past, like, when I was on the department, if there was a house fire, we had to wait for the company to come draw to shut the car off. With these disconnects, there's a fire, they can walk, shut it off and make it go.
Any other questions?
And like I said, this, we probably should have had it back on April fifth, we just missed it, but I think something felt that we could have tied it into one of the other subcategories above, we wanted to be very clear, so that's why we have that.
And it, it, does this apply if they're not able to pay their bill and gets disconnected, they'll have to pay this in addition to get it reconnected?
No. No. Only if, they're off for six months.
Okay, got it, okay.
Make a motion to approve this, uh, amendment to the West Liberty Electric Customer Service.
Okay, second, second. Alright, all those in favor?
I.
Opposed. Passes four zero. Alright. Letter D, set the date for the special city council, city council meeting for Friday, August fifth, twenty twenty at ten AM to appoint. An individual to the city council vacancy by resolution two, zero, two, two, zero, eight, zero, five, dash, one, zero. This is a consent vote and this is what. Dave had discussed with us on the phone, right?
Yep, he actually had to. Cause the amendment took a little longer than we had anticipated. We initially put out the notice of intent to file on June thirtieth. And that's a four and twenty day publication prior to the appointment. Um, we weren't able to get that done. Had we been able to get something into the paper. Last Friday, we would have been able to make that appointment tonight, but because we were only able to give it in today's paper. Thus, the need for the minimum of the four days notice, even though we had previously given those, we were going to appoint. We still needed to meet state law and. Re-advertise that we were, or did the legal noticing that we intended to. And thus it's set for Friday, ten.
You know, uh, you did get my response, I won't be here. Friday morning. Because I'm doing training all week, I.
As long as we have three.
Okay. I mean, unless you want me to give you my decision now, which hasn't changed, but.
That won't be valid.
We don't have a proxy.
Yeah.
Uh, would you be able to zoom in, Kara, or no? Um, cause you said it'd only take like ten minutes or.
I could try.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Cause Katie will be zooming in.
I'm thinking, it shouldn't take more than five minutes, so. You're, you're gonna open your, from your agenda and you're gonna be the point, so.
Okay, um, I could zoom in just to give a, I guess, uh, my. Just send it to me.
I would approve today, um, next Friday at ten AM.
And Ashley, does that work for you?
Yeah.
Okay. Want to make sure.
I, I actually called Ashley when we had to go and. Republish the intent and she said she had intended to, uh, coming and Jamar is going to be there to give a photo as well. Somebody, you told me somebody was there.
Uh, it's city hall. Yeah. Okay, uh, Jose, you have a motion and Omar would second, all those in favor?
Alright.
And all those opposed. Okay, passes four zero. Alright, uh, city council discussion appropriate follow-up to receive and file docket number CWA oh seven. Two, zero, one, seven, zero, two, oh, eight, the US EPA Region Seven Report by Meester and Kim.
Leo, is there anything you want to say about this?
The, the only thing I would say is that, um, this is something we've done twice a year for the last five years. It, it is up, I think in October, or, or I'm sorry, August, and we told them that we would. Submit them another report, a final report in October, when we get all the data from the thing and we could. We would then try to close this out, so we don't have a bi, bi-annual report. So that's, that's in that report, asking that request. I did get an email from the US EPA that said that she had received it. And would look it over and get back to us.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion?
That motion?
To receive? Second, second. All those in favor or opposed? Okay, passes four zero. Alright, set the date for the public hearing on August sixteenth to amend the stormwater utility ordinance at seven thirty. What's, what are we amending it to?
So, so we again had to set because we needed to have time for publication. Um, and with Sherry and I being out of the office, we had a few more things to go through with. And right now, my understanding, and Sherry, you can chime in. Uh, we have to change some wording in the ordinance to fit the billing. Um, and so if they're not anything to do with rate, it's just some verbiage, they have it how it actually bills.
Okay.
And that, yeah.
The part that I was talking about last week when we were talking about the production of this warm water utility itself. Being per utility account, not per household unit, it's per the account itself. And our, the verbiage that we have right now, that's agreed that way.
Okay.
Uh, can I get a motion to approve?
Like motion?
Second, okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, passes four zero. Alright, set the date for the public hearing on August sixteenth to amend the golf ATV. UTV all-terrain vehicle ordinance at seven thirty. This is what Chief, you had spoken about a little bit last time, right?
I, uh, printed up our current one and, uh, just. Literally did what we, what we normally do, I made spreads, I made suggestions. I think there were two questions that I had that I submitted to the city manager for, um, submission to the council to consider. Um, but my suggestion would be to remove all the E to be U to be verbiage, anything that applies just to those. And then keep what applies to the golf carts. And there was two questions that I had.
Dealt with the age, which under our ordinance. Uh, allowed, uh, there were licensed drivers sixteen and older. Under state law, uh, for the UTV age, he's eighteen and older. I personally don't have a problem with sixteen on a golf cart. Um, it's not going to move as quick as your ATVs, your UTVs. Uh, they are licensed drivers, but that's just my personal opinion and that's something that. You could change to tie in, but we can't go sixteen, uh, but anybody that. Operates an ATV or a UTV on our situation would have to take it longer under the current state law.
That's in the, the state law supersedes local ordinance?
They don't, they're, they're not regulating our golf.
Yeah.
They're only regulating the ATVs, which is allowing those to. Use our streets as well, some county grounds and some, some state grounds. You have no permit, is a really big thing for them. And I'm trying to remember what your other. I looked at it today. Chief, chief prepared a, he kind of struck it out, so we, we were going to get it re-formatted.
So at the public hearing though, for, if, if folks had a problem with sixteen-year-olds driving carts, they can come and speak on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
But that's what was approved a year ago.
Okay.
And the public hearing will communicate that when the date, that's the purpose of having to post a public hearing and, and then it also provides email, so. If individuals aren't available to attend, they can sign their correspondence through email or drop that information off at City Hall.
Okay.
And I do want to say I didn't mark it because I disagree or agree and marked it to make sure the council knew it was in there, so they could address whether they.
Okay. Alright, so can I get a motion to approve the public hearing on August sixteenth? Second Jose and Kara, and all those in favor? All those opposed? Passes four zero. Alright, H, set the date for the city council work session on August sixteenth. Is this for the, uh, rules and regulations that we've talked about? Or anything?
I mean, it's up to council, wh- which you would like to have a work session on, or. If you don't want to have a work session yet, if you want to wait, um. I know, and again, that might be something that you want to. With our meeting last night, I know what gets about a little bit. I don't know if maybe, you know, uh. Your folks would like to kind of bring back a report to council about how the task force is doing and. Um, and maybe share that information that you folks received last night. I, I don't, I, you know, it's.
I think it's a good idea just to set it and then if we need to cancel it, we can, that's right. Um, cause I would like, I know that, like last night, you know, we talked about presenting to council what we talked about yesterday. Um, and then I'm sure if we needed to talk about other things that we have. That's my.
And this would be after your next meeting, so maybe some additional discussion shared as well based on the. The work that the group will be doing over the next two.
So do we have a motion to approve?
Do you want us to set it for six thirty, just do an hour or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So with your motion, I just put the date in six thirty as the time.
Okay.
So whoever.
Who's second? Karen, you second?
Sure, second, yeah.
Okay, all those in favor for August sixteenth at six thirty? And all those opposed? Passes four zero. Alright. We're gonna move on to the reports. Um, Leo, do you have anything else for us?
Couple of, couple of quick things. Um, we also finished that well number two report that I told you about a couple of weeks ago. And, uh, submitted that to the city, um, for review. We initiated a digester feasibility study. Uh, this was a hundred percent due to a grant that West Liberty Foods kind of obtained. So this is kind of a co-study between the city and West Liberty Foods. And it really revolves around high-strength, um, foods that would feed a digester to make methane gas. And then to be able to clean up the gas and potentially use it to sell to the market. Run West Liberty Foods, run the wastewater treatment plant, so it's kind of a collaborative effort between the city and West Liberty Foods. And we just started that, um, just got to, got to, got that started this week. Maxon and Rainbow, uh, Road, um, we're still working on getting that meeting on the lighting. We've gotten everything we need for the power now. And I think we're about ready to go. The intent is to get everything. So it's in line, so we have a spring, um, construction starting next year and get the project done after, um, throughout the summer next year. Uh, and that's all I had tonight, thank you.
Quite, get everybody together this week, so Leo is going to shoot me some dates for next week. Um, cause Kara was out all week and our lease schedule was kind of spotty, mine was spotty.
We get to pick lights?
Yeah.
Is that what it is?
Looking at, yeah, no lights, so we're going to try to get something scheduled next week for that.
If it doesn't, if it, um, can't happen next week, can we put that as part of the work session? If that's not too late.
I think that's a good idea, that it's an intensive discussion, we might be able to put together.
That's great.
Alright, anything on city staff minutes?
Just if you have any questions on your own. You've been around town today, probably noticed that, uh, hell, hell, in town doing some of the chip ceiling.
Yeah.
And I'll remind people that, you know, chip ceiling is basically a maintenance product, it's, it's not near as expensive as if. Uh, but, uh, that is a good product on. Some streets and Adam has kind of picked the ones that he wanted to put down this year. Um, that will, you know, e- extend the life of, uh, street maybe that's not driven a lot. Hold up five and ten years, a street that's super busy in a couple of years. The work that I've seen so far today looks pretty beautiful, it's been done, it's chipped and sealed, I know people. Complain, they think we're just sort of gravel down, but it is oil with rock and. With the heat and automobiles driving on that, it will help get some of that excess rock pushed into that surface. And then at some point, Adam will have the street super, you know, go through and they'll pick up that excess rock. And I know Nick, they've got to, you haven't been out by Watson Park. Uh, they've got the old court has been hauled away completely. Uh, he's working on getting, uh, the concrete work set and then that many pitch court will be installed sometime this. Those are a couple of big things going on.
I saw, um, Casey's building went up too by Dutton a while ago.
It's, it's been around a long, it's a good sized building. But I think their hope is to have it ready for task force.
Alright. Okay, so we can move on to committee meetings. Does anybody else have any other committee meetings report besides the task force? So, um. Yesterday, uh, during the, the special committee task force for fire and EMS, I think it was a really productive meeting. We got a presentation by Eric Christensen, um, just kind of laying out exactly what a twenty-eight E agency is. What our options are. Um, he also put in some of maybe the cons that we need to think about as well. Um, we had a short discussion and. For, um, the next meeting, what we're, uh, Mindy is going to look at some numbers, there's a formula that. Um, George Orster had discussed in some of his work that, uh, Eric had based his presentation on. About how to, um, basically fund if we were to go to an agency. What did I miss?
It's basically, basically about it, talking about the twenty-eight agency.
And I think there was. Discussion on like next steps of planning, like how this might work.
Yeah, timeline, we're gonna set the.
We want it, yeah, we want to, um, set the timeline at the next meeting, which is the fifteenth of August. Um, so that we can plot out what our next steps would be and bring that to the table.
Yeah, and, um, I think there was a, a good discussion about. Kind of where we're, kind of where we're at as a council, we, we want to be kind of working together and, and. Being all on the same page, and I think the task force has been really great so far to. Um, all be on the same page and, and start fresh and it's been really good for us to be able to sit together and, and discuss some things. And, uh, I think we have a, a good path forward so far, we might need some extra time. So, which is why we're gonna talk about the timeline.
Yeah, cause I think October is going to be here before we know it and. I think that we're, we're definitely going to need more time, cause it's not as, it's easy and quick as. As it seems, yep, just need to do a lot of planning.
So there, it's, it's been productive and, and I'm looking forward to. Um, seeing what we can, what we can provide, what we can come up with collectively and. Um, we'll bring it to the council and then the rural trustees will also be, have pretty much the same information and, um, given to them.
Yeah.
Anything else? Alright. Anything else for the good of the order? I always wanted to say that. Motion for adjourn?
Make a motion, sir.
Second, okay, alright.
Done all.